We'll call the common council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Middleton.
Here.
Barga.
Here.
Romano. That's it.
Weagle.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
From the here of the minutes from our last meeting. It's on the agenda. I just realized that. Minutes aren't on yet. Not that matter. Our minutes were our last meeting on October 14th. Were there any changes or corrections? All of the corrections. So I think we will not be able to pass those tonight. Because I don't think we have a quorum of those present. So we'll have to put them on the next agenda. However, we do have the minutes from our special budget meeting on October 24th with any changes or corrections on that one. I will take a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Jenny. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous of those present. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 2025-19. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
It's removed.
Second.
Motion by Tad, seconded by Brent. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous of those present. Please read ordinance 2025-19 by title only.
Ordinance 2025-19 and ordinance emitting Chapter 97 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia City, Indiana.
Were there any changes from the last time? I don't think so. So we did talk about this. I don't, I think a couple of you were not here last time. Basically, what we're, what we've done in practice, we're putting into ordinance form, which is, which is, and frankly, what's been kind of held up by state statute is that owners of properties are in charge of kind of maintaining up to and through the, what, center lane effectively, or the center line of the road, if you will, although not in charge of taking care of the road, obviously. So that would be any of those firms or any of the areas where there's, you know, grass, let's say in between the sidewalk and the curb line, or those kind of things. This basically just covers all of that. What, this actually came from Marcia and from our code enforcement coordinator. It's one of those where, like I said, we've been doing this in practice. We just haven't really had it in statute, I'm sorry, in code, because the statute has kind of backed that up. But this kind of melds the, everything together and makes it all fit pretty. Let's say it that way. So. Any questions regarding the ordinance? I can try to answer for you.
Well, okay, there's trees in the right of way between the sidewalk and the road or in the alleys that's still maintained by the city? Or is that, I didn't see in here where it talks about the trees. And we've always had that issue, whether the trees in the alley or a property owner. So I know Sean's been nice enough with the electric department to go take care of the main, maintenance of the trees over the course of time that's in the right of way. But at the same time, if we have an issue pop up. I know I went out to one lady's house, got my tape measure out, found the pins and measured back to see if that tree was either on her property or the alley. And I had to tell her it was on, from my measurements. Unless she wanted to prove me wrong with a survey, that it looked like that tree was on her property. So, you know, if it's in the alleys, that's always a discussion where in my current place, where I used to work, who's responsible for the trees in the alleys and the right of way?
So I think, Marcia, I'll kind of put you on task here a little bit, not on task, but on call here. I think our, our position has consistently been that trees that are kind of within a certain individual's property or in front of their property are ultimately their responsibility. However, the tree board does maintain those street trees. And there is a, there is a database of those street trees. We have a tree board member sitting on, on this council right now. And so it has been, I think, the kind of acting policy, if you will, of the city, that we maintain the street trees. Ultimately, I will say though, Marcia, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a scenario where if a tree does cause a hazard or something like that, even though it's a city, street tree, a street tree, right? It is still ultimately the property owner's responsibility. Now, we have maintained those trees. We have taken care of those trees. We have cut down those trees that have, have shown wear and tear. But if it's an emergency situation, again, Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a scenario we've said that it is still the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, because the right, the property's still the property owner.
Yeah. We just have the right of way as an ability when it's flooded.
Right, right. And so, but if it's something that's like interfering, interfering with the utility line or something, the city can go trim those. And again, emergency situations, if there's, if they're actually street trees planted by the city, then we might maintain those. But if they're property owners' trees, then they're responsible for those trees.
And I think we sort of try to address that issue a little bit. Because there does, and there is a point that says there that basically any kind of personal property that's been planted, right? So someone has decided to plant their own tree in the right of way or things to that effect, landscaping, et cetera. There is an ability for the city to come in by order of the board and with 15 days written notice, that they have to move that for whatever the purpose is, right? But ultimately, again, the street trees, there's a database of those. We know which ones those are. And we do try to maintain those through the tree board and through trimming, as well as through, obviously, the electric.
A lot of people don't understand the road right of way.
Sure, I understand.
Or where the road right of way.
For that matter, or east.
Just like a little bit of a situation here recently. You know, there's, it's an eighty-two and a half foot right of way where the property line goes right up to the front of the house.
Yes.
And so the tree is then actually the right of way, not the property owner's property.
And I would, I would recommend, Dan, if you do end to get into situations like that where someone's reaching out to you as a council member regarding a tree, reach out to the tree board. Have us, have us say, say, hey, I'll reach out to the tree board. We'll get an answer for you. Because we've got the information that pertains to those trees and we can answer them without having to go measure or having to find pins and that type of.
Because that, that's been brought up to me a couple, three times. Well, who takes care of that? Well.
You can just say, you can say Brent.
Yeah.
I love that answer. No, let's just give that.
I'll let him yell at me and then, and then we can go from there. But yeah, it's, it's a pretty active board right now of people that are, that are vested in it and know how to utilize and look up the information. We can handle those pretty, pretty quickly.
I was gonna say, I think the biggest question was, where does the liability fall? Does it fall back on to the homeowner if it truly is a street tree in the right of way? Because this, one that Jen helped me with the other day is a street tree. It's not one that was supposed to be taken down, but it is in the right of way. So Marcia and I have talked, it's still, the liability still falls back to the homeowner in that situation. And I do have emails out to the insurance company too.
And I'll say, if you remember the direction that came through, on Main Street, there was a very large tree. It would be on the east side of Main Street, maybe the two or 300 block that toppled over. And I got the misfortune of having to go tell that property owner that it was on, it was their responsibility to, it's on their insurance to take care of that tree. Even though it was a street tree, it was still on their insurance to take care of. So, so just from a little bit of more perspective of what the situation is. And it's, again, it's a, it's a bit of a gray area, really. I mean, candidly.
You can't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marcia, on a right of way like that, if that right of way were vacated, where would that interest go? So if it were vacated and the interest of a street would be 50% and 50% homeowner on one side, homeowner on the other.
If the street is vacated, yes, or the alley is vacated.
Right. So that's kind of, kind of a gauge that I go off of, of whose responsibility is what is. If this were vacated and it wasn't right of way anymore, who would?
Who would, who would get it?
Who would, who would benefit from the vacation of that right of way? And who would be deeded that property?
Just a quick note, when Leslie reached out to me, I went, because I knew I'd responded to this before. And I went back and looked at the, the thread of conversations. And I had reached back to the prior attorney before I started in 1998. And just to see what the city's policy has already been. And he said, yes, that's, that's how, that's how it's always been viewed. And with other communities as well, not just the city of Columbia.
We're not setting a new precedent.
No, no, no. But I mean, that's, that's how that's always been handled and always been viewed. So this is nothing new.
I think it's a great question, because it is, it's always a lingering issue out there. Well, the city's taking care of these trees, aren't they? Aren't they city trees? Well, no, they're really not city trees. We take care of them because they beautify our community. We may plant them, but to be fair, we even give individuals in those planting areas, if we say, or the arborist says, hey, we're gonna plant something here, we're gonna plant something here, the resident can actually say no. So if they can say no to a tree, that means they also own the tree, right? Theoretically. And if we go and cut down the tree, just another, for instance. We, if, if the city says, hey, it's infected with bugs, or it's dying, or things like that, we want to go cut the tree down, the homeowner can say, no, I don't want that cut down. We have them say a liability waiver that we've set that needs, and they're aware of it, and it's their tree. So I, I think there's a couple of situations, I'm not saying this directly to you, but more, just for more context in the conversation. Street trees are a bit of a gray area, but it's pretty clear from historical precedent, from legal precedent, that it is, it is the homeowner's responsibility. So, so, sorry to go a little deep there. So, but ultimately, I think the purpose behind this ordinance was really because there were areas that individuals are not taking care of because it's the city's right of way, quote unquote. And so grass and weeds are growing up high. And they're saying, oh, this is the city's responsibility, not mine. That's not the case. That's not the case. So, legal precedent has shown that's not the case. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your questions, Dan. I really appreciate that. So any other questions regarding the ordinance? Sorry, I've talked that one to death, I'm sure. So, okay. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-19 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brent, seconded by Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It is unanimous of those present. Thank you. Because of the short agenda, I will, I do have one other thing I do want to ask for. Actually, maybe, Tad, you can bring yours up too, a little bit here. But as you may, may or may not know, our utility rate advisory board, who meets about once a year, recently, well, I guess, multiple months ago, Lee Botts, who was the chairman of the, of the board, had some medical issues and stuff and had to step away from the board. So I had a great conversation this morning with an individual by the name of Doug Farrell. Doug is a long, was a longtime Northeastern REMC employee. Held lots of different positions in REMC. And I think it would be a really, really good replacement for the utility rate advisory board. He is the non-city utility customer, meaning he lives outside the city limits, but is our, is a city utility customer. I talked to Sean before this meeting. He felt pretty confident about Doug's ability to serve. And with utility rate advisory board appointments, I bring them to you. I appoint, but I have to get confirmation from you. So I would respectfully request your approval of Doug Farrell to fill the non-city utility customer board position. I do need a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion, you know, we accept Doug Farrell as a utility advisory board by your appointment.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Dan, seconded by?
We'll let Tad have it.
Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It's unanimous of those present. Thank you very much. Tad, do you want to bring up your individual?
Yeah, so I have someone for the tree board. I've talked to him a couple different times. And so he can, he's willing, he lives just north of town, so not in the city limits. But super sharp guy, used to do building planning and construction in Los Angeles and Northern California, so, you know, but he's lived here for probably 10, 12 years now. So his name, Jim Crystal, and I think he'd be great for it. He's well-enabled. He's really interested in doing it.
Any, any other comments, thoughts, individuals for? Okay.
What was his name again, Tad?
Jim Crystal.
Crystal, like? Thank you.
Okay, great. Is that a motion?
Yes.
To appoint Jim Crystal to the tree board, to the, uh, hmm. Is that unexpired? Oh, it's Jennifer's unexpired term. Yes. To Jennifer's unexpired. So that's a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Jenny. Further discussion. All those in favor should put the usual sign. It's unanimous of those present. Thank you for that. We will get him in to get sworn in. So, thank you. Firehead reports. Sean?
So we continued our utility pool replacement project. The second half of testing was completed. There's 160-some additional pools to add to our list of, we started with last year, so we'll be getting on those. All these pools are in the rural areas. So also State Road 9500 north, from 500 north to 600 north. We had a contractor doing some utility pool work for REMC. We piggybacked on their project and had a pool and new conductors for us. They did have a little bit of a mishap yesterday. They had an arc. No one was injured. They did drop our entire rural feed breaker by doing so. We were able to get half the people back up within five, 10 minutes, but the rest of them took another 40 minutes or so to get back on. They had to clear the area. They actually started a field fire when they had their arc. So they had to put the fire out first. So, but we got them back up. They did finish that project up, so there shouldn't hopefully be any more issues out there. We did complete, we got approved for the engineering on the radio road transmission project. We're gonna send some RFQs out for some swi, for a switch for that project. Already got two of them sent, sent out today. Our bucket truck update that we purchased nearly two years ago now, it went into the shop for, to begin construction today. So should have that done in the next couple of months. So excited to get that. We had a short training period today on some underground wire fusing applications and testing. So thanks to Jamie Shields, one of our reps, for coming down to do that. And the Board of Works did approve our substation testing for the year. The mayor, power maintenance, is going to be testing our south substation still this fall yet. And so they better hurry. So anyway, other than that, normal day-to-day activities.
Questions of Sean. Thank you. Kelly?
Well, we started our second round of lead pickup yesterday. First week, we had a couple of days invested in that. And then this'll probably be three days this week. And then we're gonna bring all of our plows in to the McCallum's area and change out hydraulic oil on those and do some other maintenance. And then bring our salt boxes in, start going through those. Got a couple of them we know need some new bearings and things like that done to them. And Lori Schiffman emailed me and is starting to work on our community crossings for next year, requesting the letter of approval that we got from Purdue, so she can add that to her application for community crossings. And if you see any work down by the old Braden Products area, by the new path that was put in. The maintenance crew for the school had reached out to me wanting to know about running a new sewer line out to the main, because they're currently, the old one that they had was, runs really flat and had some bellies in it, and it's not in very good shape. So they want to run a new line. And it gets real close to the trail where the main is.
The brand-new trail.
The brand-new trail.
99.1% complete.
The good thing is, is the trail kind of goes like this and the line runs straight through.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Hopefully, they can, but level up, is currently looking at it. Met with them down there, so if you see any excavation work down around that area, they're gonna really try to avoid getting into that. So, yeah.
It was great for the photo op. Ribbon cutting was great.
Well, that's fun. Okay. As long as we're keeping an eye on it and any damage they're gonna have to pay for, so.
Gonna have you a nice patch.
I hope not.
Are they, are they trenching or boring for that part? Can they bore it?
They're, no, they're, I mean, the, the main, it's a 42-inch main, but it's on the other side of the trail. So, but it's like 13-foot deep. So I think they can stay away from it.
The more words you say, the more.
I shouldn't have brought it up. Shouldn't have brought that up. Should just surprise you when I start digging.
Okay. Okay. Hey, any other fun things you have to tell us, Kelly? Questions of Kelly's coming. Thank you. Thomas?
Yeah, he didn't mention the, no. As I reported in the last meeting, 107, ladder 107 is still an Indy. Parts are in order to get it repaired. Had a leaky waterway after, they were supposed to repair the leaky waterway. So that's hopefully in, in the mix. And then it's gotta go to Ann Ohio after that. It's a, gotta keep in mind, it's a 25-year-old truck and probably five, somewhere around five years from now, it's gonna need replaced. So I'll be retired, so you can't be mad at me. New engine's gonna come in even earlier than expected. It's looking like that is going to be as early as January. Spoke with the mayor and Leslie about, the clerk treasurer, about getting that paid for and, and how they're gonna do the financing, so they're working on that. Mike McGregor's updating the equipment quotes. Something that has just been plaguing us and we're not in the same scenario that, as far as the tunneling thing that the police had going up the Sierra Wireless. But Sierra Wireless are, how we connect our engines and police vehicles to the internet is a challenge and it's an IT nightmare. I, I think somewhere along the line, there's gonna need to be, I'm just opening up the communications. There's gonna need to be, sorry, somebody keeps trying to call me. Some conversation in reference to helping Terry get, somebody in there for the IT stuff. That's funny. Landon Tim completed his probation book, which was a big deal for him. Got quotes to get the west side of the fire station repaired some. In the past, somebody has hit the west side of the fire station between those giant telephone poles, and I really don't know how they've done it. And then the live-fire training this past Saturday went really well. It was, our county's doing a firefighter one and two class. It's a state-sponsored class, but most of it's filled with our county people. So we let them use the live, live-fire training facility to get their live-fire that's required for the training. So that's a big deal, letting them get, get that done. So that's it.
Questions to Tom. Thank you. Matt?
We ran some electric out to the front sign, so it has, so it can have some permanent lighting, so it stays on from dusk till dawn. And we also, as we did that, we put some plugs, so that we are able to plug in, you know, seasonal lights, Halloween, Christmas, all that. We started winterizing the parks, taking down nets and basketball, you know, getting all that stuff around. We also started, we're gonna start doing restrooms here real soon. We're getting ready to launch a new software. Our old software ran up in September, but we were able to still use it until now. So the ladies are working on that, trying to find the ins and outs so they can help train the new people that come in for the front office and things of that nature. And then other than that, we're just doing day-to-day stuff.
Questions to Matt. Thank you. Mike?
The guys are out, they started Monday pot-holing the last thousand, thousand homes that we do not know if it's lead, copper, plastic. They're potty-holing on both sides of the meter pit to find out what is coming in and what's going to the house. Also, I brought up that we've had some brownwater complaints over the last month or two. We've had brownwater complaints in the 12 years I've been here at one time or another. The problem is, when I started, people would call the, the utility office and say, hey, my waters, I got discolored water. We would go out, find out what's going on if we had to. We flush the hydrants. We're on well water. It's got a high iron content. We take a lot of the iron out, but we don't take, we can't take all of it out. It settles out in the mains and then it eventually goes through the service lines. If you call in, if you have a brownwater complaint, call in. We'll come out and try to take care of the problem. Nathana putting it on Facebook and that, and complaining, but not telling us where you live. There's nothing we can do. It's gonna continue till we get out there and try to get it cleaned up. It's, it's a natural thing. When you have well water, you're gonna have this problem. When I worked in Bourbon for the 10 years I worked over there, we had the same problem every once in a while. had the same problem every once in a while, it's well water, it's got a high iron content, there's nothing you can do.
I'll just add on, I won't go to the full extent of the Border Works, but I'll just add on that, as Abraham Lincoln said, don't trust everything you read on Facebook, because there is a lot of information that goes out on Facebook that doesn't necessarily tell the full amount of truth, there have been times where our guys have went out to those brown water areas, and have opened up the well pit, and taken a big scoop of water, and it's crystal clear, so, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the city's fault, sometimes it's internal, sometimes it's a water softener issue, sometimes, there's lots of reasons for it, when it is our problem, when it is our, you know, our issue, we do try to get it cleaned up as much as we can, as Mike said, but just know that everything you see on Facebook is not always our fault, so, that's all I'll say about that, appreciate, I know, shopping, yes, I really appreciate Mike's guys, they've been really good at communicating to me as to when there's issues, of course, I've tried really hard to push people to say, listen, if you have an issue with your water, as Mike said, don't just post on Facebook, call us at City Utilities, we'll come out and we'll take a look at it, every one of those times, our guys have went out, went to the home, met with the homeowner, gotten water, taken a look at it, all those kinda things, so, just in case you get those calls, redirect them back to utility office, please. Questions of Mike, thank you, sir, Gary?
So last week, we did receive the battery boxes for the tornado sirens that were replaced, I talked to Sean earlier, and Matt did go out and take a look at those, and thinks that he can get those replaced pretty easily, so hopefully we can get that done in the near future, we did take four potential applicants to Indianapolis at the Indiana Public Safety Medical, for the physical and psychological testing, usually it's a ten to fourteen-day turnaround, however, it's, we did that back on the seventh, so now we're at twenty-one days, they say ten to fourteen business days, there was a holiday in there, but they're actually requesting some more paperwork from their family, their primary doctors, so, on a couple of them, so, still waiting for that, get them started as soon as we can, if everything goes well, community events, Skeleton Festival went well, gearing up for Halloween this Friday, we are gonna put no parking signs down on Columbia Shores, on the one side that we always do for, like, the fire hydrant side, so it makes that street wider, people get through there, because it's tight when they park on both sides, so, we're gonna put no parking signs on the one side there, that goes pretty easy, Tractor Supply, TSC's doing a touch of truck on this Saturday, which we'll have a couple guys there, Veterans Marathon is November eighth, so we're gearing up for that, too, that takes a lot of manpower, October first, we transitioned to a twelve eight-hour shift schedule, I sent something out today for a follow-up, since we're about a month into it, everybody seems to be enjoying it, liking it, and seems like coverage is pretty good, so.
Can you define that better, because if I were listening, I'd say, wait, there's twelve eight-hour shifts that people are working, but that's not the case?
No, it's a twelve-hour shift or an eight-hour shift, so, kinda the way I designed that up, you know, most agencies go with either twelve, or they go eight, so, right now, we got five guys on a day shift schedule, so, these two guys work twelve hours, these two guys work twelve hours, this guy works eight hours, so, these two guys, this guy here works three days with these guys, two days with these guys, and then, days off, three days with these guys, two days with these guys, so there's always extra coverage in those days with those guys, this is just a simple math thing, so, so there's always extra days, because if I would stake this guy, stake him on this twelve-hour shift, these guys never have any extra time, extra people are able to take time off, so, it kinda splits it up a little bit, so it really works pretty good, so, that's kinda how I did that.
Thank you.
So, the guys seem to be working well, enjoying it, spent the last couple days, like Tom said about Sierra Wireless, when they changed the tunnel, or the Sonic wall, it kinda shut our Sierra Wireless cars down, so we've been down for a little over a week now, and come to find out, a guy spent like four and a half hours in one of our cars yesterday, trying to figure out why we're having problems, and stemmed from a three-year-old problem, when they programmed it back then, they put it through the tunnel, going straight to City Hall, instead of out to internet, and then into the City Hall, so, whenever City Hall's internet would go down, it would shut our cars down, and go to the backup internet, we were on the first internet, so, the primary internet, so, whenever the primary would go down, it'd switch over to secondary, our car would shut down, so, they figured out, hey, we need to reprogram to the internet first, and then through the tunnel, and they've got that fixed, again, that was the process, so now, the deputy chief, Chris Sanders, and he's been, he's done seven cars today, and they're working great, so, now I think we're on track, so, because we went years with no problems, and then, problems here and there, et cetera, so, it's good, now, hopefully, I don't want.
Okay?
Yep.
Questions of Gary, thank you, a couple of other reports from Terry here, he's been working through several computer crashes related to Microsoft updates, there was a network outage, I believe, on Sunday, to update Sonic wall firewall issues, so that's pretty much from Terry, Mike Cook, Spectra Tech finished lining the digester, so you may have seen those beautiful pink pictures on social media, so, the lining of the digester is pink, we did receive our annual bio-monitoring report, a hundred percent passed, which is good, passing result for both species, if you don't know, there's minnows, and then there's water bugs, if you will, so, a hundred percent passing, that's good, that means our, the water that we're putting out, outside of the, outside of the plant when it's done, is good, say okay, so, also, along with that ammonia, you may remember him talking about ammonia, we've been having ammonia issues, thankfully, that appears to be under control, we actually had IDIM come in and asked them, what do we do, and they said, did you try this, and we said, yes, and they said, did you try this, and we said, yes, and they go, well, then we don't know what to do, we don't know what to tell you, so, but thankfully, we've been able to get it addressed, and we don't have ammonia issues anymore, thankfully, and then Gray Wolf is scheduled to return on November tenth, to install the digester cover, and kind of do the, all the installation there, and I think the only other thing for him is that Brian Thomas passed the class three water treatment, water pollution treatment exam, so congratulations to him on that. Marsha?
Nothing.
Leslie?
Reminder, Monday, November third, nine o'clock, we have adoption of the budget, and then, next council meeting is November twelfth, instead of the eleventh, because of Veterans Day, so just make sure that you have that updated.
Wednesday, yes, thank you, a couple of additional things, we had youth council yesterday, that went, I think, really well, our youth council members met with the county commissioners, and a couple members of the county council, and so, that's, I think that was a good compare and contrast to what we do here, and how the, how the system is different, if you will, between county and city, we, as mentioned, we do have trick or treat this Friday from five to eight PM throughout the city, and I'll also tell you that we are having two leadership development sessions for our staff leadership on Friday, so we've kinda split people into either the morning session or the afternoon session, so, I know our staff are really pumped up and excited about leadership development, but it's about dealing with difficult people, which I think is a very apropos topic, especially right now, and where things are from a public standpoint, and interpersonal relationships, and all that kinda good stuff, so, I think it's really, I'm excited about it, as much as you can be excited about leadership development training, so, so, that's, that's good. Let's see, is there anything else, Chip and I will be going to a economic forum that Star Bank always puts on, on next Thursday morning, not this Thursday, next Thursday, that's always a good time to kinda see the economic forecast, I forget that Dr. Siegfried, I think is what his name is, do you go to that?
I've been to.
You've been, so, he does a really good job of laying out the GDP stuff, and all of that kinda economic factors, and, you know, and he's been pretty right along the way to say, yes, we're going into recession, no, we're not going into recession, here's the factors that says why and why not, gets a little granular in detail, but it's like the one time a year I feel pseudo-smart, which is great, that's great, so, besides that, we also have Veterans Marathon happening on Saturday, the eighth, so downtown will be packed with individuals, besides that, I think that's all I got.
No, I heard Chip's report, we're still ninety-nine point nine percent.
Yes, yes, we're still ninety-nine point one percent completed with the trail, I believe, yes, so.
Until we dig it up.
Until we dig it up. Please don't.
I'm not digging it up.
I know you're not, Kelly, but please don't dig up my trail, please don't do that.
We'll go back to eighty percent.
Kelly, I really wish Chip would've been here for that, like, I do.
I'm gonna surprise him.
So, yes. Congratulate Ryan on being the AIM president.
Oh, thank you.
This year, he was like, they're down there at the AIM conference, and that's a really, really big deal, a lot of responsibility, a lot of good stuff happens at the AIM conference, and so, somebody in charge of that, they choose to fill there, so, congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate, appreciate that, Dan, and I'll say, Mayor Dave Wood from Mission Walker, you know, really battled hard for us this year in the legislature and stuff, it could've been so much worse than it was, but I anticipate this upcoming legislative session's gonna be extra challenging, because I think there's gonna be, lots of people will have ideas of tweaks, and so filtering how those tweaks impact us, impact cities, impact the towns, the big towns, the small towns, et cetera, I think it's gonna be a bit of a challenge, so, we, but we have a great AIM staff that kinda keeps the ball rolling down the hill, if you will, so, appreciate that, very kind of you, so, yeah, anything else? Okay, Tad?
I have nothing.
Jenny?
I have nothing.
Brent?
No, sir.
Okay, no press, anything from the audience? Okay, with that, we will call the meeting adjourned, thank you.